Welcome, everyone. We're going to call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGoughlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
The morning coming.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
When do you go to work?
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Here.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Counselor Scott is attending a family funeral and may be able to join us virtually, and Counselor Davis has a family obligation this evening. Pursuant to Rule 32, let it be known that this City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Are there counselors who wish to say a few words in remembrance of a community member tonight? All right, seeing none, everyone in the chamber who is able, if you'll please rise for a moment of silence. Let's begin. Colleagues, after our citation tonight, we're going to take three items out of order. Item 4.7 is a resolution from Counselor Klingon and others. And after that, we're going to take item 10.5, which is the approval of the fire alarm collective bargaining contract. And after that is a financial item that we're going to discharge to deal with because it's time-sensitive. With that, next item, please.
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 23rd, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Laid on the table for approval.
Laid on the table for approval.
Item 2.1 is a citation by Counselor Ewan Campen commending Arn Franzen on the occasion of his retirement from the Public Space and Urban Forestry Division after more than 20 years of distinguished service.
It's my name on the agenda. This is from the mayor and the entire city council. It is a great honor to offer this citation to celebrate the career of Arn Franzen, who has served for more than 20 years in playgrounds, parks, public spaces. And I was provided with a list of some of those public spaces that Arn was involved in, and I'm going to indulge myself and actually read that list now.
Aye, aye, aye.
Corbett McKenna Park, Florence Playground, Nathan Tuft's Park, Pal Machi Playground, Perkins Playground, Durrell Community Garden, Perry Park, Stone Place Park, Ed Leathers Community Park, Lexington Park, Trum Field, Albion Playground, Grimmin's Park, Hodgkins Curtain Park, Dickerman Playground, Zero New Washington Park, Morse Kelly Playground, East Somerville Community Schoolyard, Quincy Street Pocket Park, Sylvester Baxter Riverfront Park, Glenn Park and Capuano Early Childhood Education Schoolyard, North Street Veterans Playground, John F. Kennedy Back Schoolyard, Cremen Playground, Argenziano Schoolyard, Lincoln Park, Hoyt Sullivan Park, Somerville Community Growing Center, Conway Park, Allen Street Playground and Community Garden, Dillboy Memorial Stadium, Blessing of the Bay Park, Arthur Healy Schoolyard and Community Park, Brown Schoolyard, West Somerville Neighborhood Schoolyard, Central Hill Campus, Henry Hansen Park, Somerville Junction Park. Let's have a round of applause for that list. Director, I'm going to let you speak in just a minute, but I just want to mention something that's on my mind. For folks who are familiar with Robert Moses, who's a famous planner and builder in New York, some would argue an evil leader in New York for many decades, there's a famous book about him called The Power Broker. Robert Moses started in parks, and he did so because he knew that parks were so popular that he could use them to build political power to get a toehold on and do all of his evil plans. My understanding is that Arn is just really passionate about parks and playgrounds, and I think it's worth celebrating that fact, that this was not just an excuse for you to be evil and take over the whole city, you were just actually trying to serve the public. So, thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to provide you with this citation, and welcome you to speak.
Through the chair. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. I just had a couple of things to say. First, that was a wonderful list of parks that I have worked on. I in no way, shape, or form was in charge of all those parks from start to finish. I worked on all those parks in one form or another. So, but thank you for that acknowledgement. So, through the chair, thank you very much to the members of the City Council and the mayor's office. I sincerely appreciate the acknowledgement of my 20 years working for the city. It has been a pleasure and an honor. I'd also like to extend my sincere thanks to Tom Gallagani and everyone past and present at the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, and especially my colleagues at the Department of Public Space and Urban Forestry. Luisa Olivero, Vanessa Bukili, Malik Drayton, Allison Moore, and John Bronnigent. We have an amazing team. Our parks and open space projects would not be possible without the city team, which includes the SPCD finance team, the staff at the DPW, Brad Rossin and his mobility team, the city's engineering department, OSE, the arts council, traffic and parking, and all the other city departments which has contributed to our projects. We have all, all of us, worked incredibly hard to incorporate great designs for our parks and open spaces. And through collaborations with some of the best landscape architecture firms in New England, our parks have won over 10 design awards. Together, together, we have changed the conversation in this city about what a quality open space represents. Together, we have transformed the parks, schoolyards, and fields with new, high-quality designs that focused on improved community health by providing greater ecosystem benefits and recreation opportunities. So, thank you again, everyone. Thank you again for your help. Please keep up the good work and keep planting those trees. Thank you. Thank you very much. And happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Counselor McGoughlin.
President, through you. So, I saw this resolution, and I was really amazed that Arn has been here for only 20 years, actually, because I thought you came with the city, Arn, because he's one of the first people I met in city politics when I started, got started around 2007, 2008 was when I really got involved in Somerville politics, and it was around a playground. It was around Lexington Park, which was a neighborhood, the neighborhood playground. There was a division between new and old Somerville, and one of the things that came from that project was, like, from that conflict, we agreed to rebuild the park and make it more community-centered. And there was a community process with a wonderful mural that, we just had a second mural on it, and it was a real community-building event for me, for the whole community. So, I will say, though, Mr. President, you compare him to Robert Moses, and he is no Robert Moses, because Arn listens to people. Robert Moses didn't listen to anybody, and he did whatever he wanted. And Arn really took the time to listen to a bunch of teenagers and young kids who wanted to have input in their community, who felt like that they weren't going to be listened to. So, I really want to thank him for everything he did for me personally, and if anybody has a problem with anything I've ever done in this city, you can blame Arn Franzen, because that one project was really my start. But in all honesty, it is, it's a great legacy, Arn. I'm very happy that you served in this community, and it must be a very positive feeling to go around the community. I know how I feel with my one project, or with Kelly Park, or just these one or two projects that I participated in, and to have a whole list of projects like that, you have a wonderful legacy, and thank you for serving this community.
Great. Thank you, man. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. So, similar to Counselor McGoughlin, I first encountered, we're still calling you Director Franzen, are you officially retired? We'll call you, we'll just call you Arn here. I first encountered Arn as just a community member in the leadership of Friends of Healy over the Healy Schoolyard, and it was sort of our job to rile up the Healy community, we'll say organize them to come to meetings. We, we'll pat ourselves, pat ourselves on the back, we definitely riled them up. Those of you who were on the council time probably recall some very angry Healy parents. Arn always handled that level of anger with grace and with class, even while being literally yelled at by some members of the Healy school community, and I always appreciated that about him, his sort of grace under fire. And then I dealt with Arn also when I ran Somerville U Soccer. We had a huge interest in athletic fields, and I was just always impressed with Arn's willingness to sit down and go over what was, you know, the timeline around the fields, what was happening with that. It was helpful just to set expectations and just, I appreciate the work you did in our city. You heard that whole list of parks. You know, I attend a lot of the ribbon cuttings, and I know you worked on those projects, and I just, our parks and playgrounds have really come up in this city. It's been really noticeable having been here for a long time, and Arn definitely deserves a lot of credit for the work that's gone into making that happen. It really makes our city a lot more livable, it enhances connection in the city, it helps with athletics and recreation, and I'm just hugely appreciative of all you've done for us, and you're going to be really tough to replace.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. I just wanted to say that we are really proud of the work at the Healy Schoolyard. I think that was a great team effort. With your assistance and with Counselor Klingon's help, we were able to work with that community, and I know that your work with the Friends of the Healy and helping us to get some of the first grants for that project was very instrumental. And I think that that was just a great example of how the community could come together to take an old space and transform it, to bring it up to, you know, very reasonably, very, the higher city standards that we should all expect. So, that goes with the credit of the counsel as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I want to thank Arn for his service to the city. I also encountered Arn before I was into politics. Arn is somebody who kept government accessible to the people. When I approached him about renaming Otis Park, Deanna Cremens Park, he was extremely helpful and receptive, even in the face of some people don't always like to have a park named after a tragic figure. He saw that, he always honored Deanna's memory in that she was an early childhood development student, and she loved playgrounds and the idea of children playing in the park named after her and in her spirit. He helped to see through her wish, and I'll always be grateful for that. And of course, the Healy School, we knocked it out of the park. It's been, it was a great process, but I just want to thank you for listening to people and always trying to incorporate the important things in the community. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Mbah, and then Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you too. And just to add to the list of accolades, I've known you for as long as I've also been in this city, and he's one of the most visible city employee. It's like, and just to, you know, qualify what Counselor Wilson said, like, you really treat people, respond to conversation and question with so much grace, and I cannot thank you enough. So, thank you for all the years of service to this community. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Arn, I first want to thank you for always responding to my nudging emails about the West Somerville Neighborhood Schoolyard. It is such a beautiful space for our youth to play in. I, as you know, I'm a newish mom, I'm 14-month-old, and I get asked a lot, like, what's so great about raising a kid in Somerville? And I get to tell them that within a quarter of a mile, I have six parks I can walk my kid to, and they're all so different and unique. And I, and, you know, I'd like to have a backyard, sure, but I get six parks that are my backyard with swings and water features and climbing structures and green space and grass for my kid to crawl on and feel different textures. It's such a wonderful part of the city, and in the mom's world that I'm now a part of, it is talked about extensively how impressive Somerville parks are and our green spaces are. And I just want you to know that your legacy is going to live on in these parks and open spaces in the city, and so thank you for everything you've done, everything you've contributed, every idea, everything you've pushed for to help make sure that our community has access to these beautiful spaces.
Great. Thank you, Counselor.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. You know, I'll just add, as the parent of a three-year-old myself, I spend 75% of my waking hours in playgrounds that you worked on, and it's a huge part of, you know, my family's life, but watching what it means to a three-year-old, the social life, the everything that it means, he is going to have these memories for the rest of his life.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the chair, thank you to the City Council, because the people in this horseshoe have made our parks and open spaces possible. And so, it is also your opportunity to carry that responsibility forward and to make sure that we are achieving the higher goals and objectives that the city has always pursued. So, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Don't be a stranger. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3.1, a grant of location from Eversource to install 32 feet of conduit in Mount Pleasant Street from utility pole 243 over 3 to a point of pickup at 24 to 28 Mount Pleasant Street.
This public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy, Eversource Energy, we'd like to install 32 feet of conduit on Mount Pleasant Street to provide electricity to 2428 Mount Pleasant Street.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the item? We'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, that item is approved. Next item.
Thank you. Have a nice night, everybody.
Good night, Jackie Duffy.
The next item will be the first item we're taking out of order, which is item 4.7, a resolution by Counselors Klingon, Wilson, Ewan Campen, Strezzo, Burnley, and Pineda Newfeld, celebrating the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, recognizing July as Disability Pride Month, and the 26th of July as Americans with Disabilities Act Day.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we close in on July, I was approached by some members of the community who brought forth this idea, something that I'm surprised we've never done before, and actually, pretty shocked, actually, that it's taken this long. I mean, Disability Pride Month has been around since 2015, so I'm just going to say a few words, and I am going to sponsor a couple of speakers. So, as I said, I'm happy to bring this resolution for, I'm happy and honored to bring this resolution forward on behalf of those who have fought tirelessly for the dignity and rights of persons with disabilities and those who will continue this fight going forward. Disability Pride Month initially started as a day of celebration in 1990 and was held in Boston. This is the same year the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed. So, you know, Boston and the area surrounding it have a rich history of activism, and that activism has been strong throughout the community of persons with disabilities from day one. I remember, I remember in 2012 when the MBTA was trying to raise rates, they were trying to do rate hikes, and it was persons with disabilities who were on the front lines fighting for all of us. I remember, I remember I was working for DDS, I was driving up Beacon Hill, taking the commissioner of DDS up there, and there were six individuals in wheelchairs chained together chanting, "If we can't ride, you can't drive." And I just remember driving, well, being stuck there, but eventually driving by as they were eventually moved, and just being so proud to live in a city like Boston where this is, where many, many things start. But as time has gone on, the celebration of Pride Month, as Pride Day has progressed to a month rather than just a day. The first celebration of Disability Pride Month was in 2015, which marked the 25th anniversary of the ADA being signed. So, Disability Pride Month serves as a reminder that individuals with disabilities are an integral part of our society, deserving of respect, support, and equal opportunities. This resolution not only aims to raise awareness about the challenges faced by individuals with disabilities, but also seeks to celebrate their achievements and contributions to our community. It is a call to action for all of us to advocate for the rights and inclusion of persons with disabilities, ensuring that they have a voice and decision-making processes that impact their lives. Somerville continues to make strides in promoting accessibility and inclusivity. However, there is still a lot of work to be done. We must continue to create an environment where individuals with disabilities can thrive and reach their full potential. This means improving physical accessibility, proving accessible transportation, improvement for accessible transportation options, and ensuring that our public spaces, institutions, and events are fully inclusive, including our parks. Let us use this month as an opportunity to celebrate the achievements and the resilience of individuals with disabilities and to renew our commitment as a city to creating, to creating a city that embraces diversity and empowers all its residents. And with that, I ask the clerk to read the resolution, and then I will indulge, ask colleagues if I can sponsor two speakers.
Whereas, since the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July 26th, 1990, Disability Pride has become a celebratory movement aimed at recognizing achievements for disability rights while pushing for disability equity across all sectors of life. And whereas, prior to 1990, people living with disabilities were subjected to employment and other disability-based discriminations with lack of equal protection under the law. And whereas, the ADA is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history, establishing protections to prevent discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including jobs, schools, transportation, and all private places open to the general public. And whereas, Disability Pride uplifts and celebrates the contributions of disability activists that fought for the passage of the ADA and have valiantly advocated for protected pathways toward better working and living conditions for everyone. And whereas, Disability Pride enables people with disabilities to redefine their identity, serves as a tool to tackle ableism, bias, discrimination, and reshapes negative perceptions of individuals with disabilities as people with values, talents, and significance. And whereas, many cities across the United States have celebrated Disability Pride Month since the early 2000s. And whereas, the City of Somerville is committed to celebrating and respecting all people with disabilities and building upon the efforts of breaking barriers in all areas of public life. And whereas, the City of Somerville is a leader in celebrating diversity, supporting social justice and equity in the city, and fostering mutual respect and understanding for all, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby recognizes every 26th of July in the City of Somerville as ADA Day to honor and observe the valuable contributions the disability community brings to the growth, diversity, and economic prosperity of our city. And be it further resolved that the City Council hereby recognizes this day as a time of celebration this year and every year thereafter in the City of Somerville. And be it further resolved that the City Council hereby recognizes the month of July of every year in the City of Somerville as Disability Pride Month to honor and celebrate the contributions of disability activists that fought for the passage of the ADA and that valiantly advocated for protected pathways toward independent living and better working and living conditions for everyone. And be it further resolved that the City Council hereby recognizes this month as a time of celebration this year and every year thereafter in the City of Somerville. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption by the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and through you, Mr. President. I would like to sponsor first the Honorable Eugene Brune, former mayor, one of the best mayors the city has had. Come on up to the podium, Mayor Brune.
Welcome, Mayor Brune.
It's great to be back here. I've always had a spot in my heart for this room, because I served as the alderman from Ward 6, which is absent today. You can tell that I was here. And so, I always, I'm always pleased when I can be here. When I renovated the building, I made sure that I had a part in the design of where you're sitting, because I wanted to be nice, I wanted to be first-class, because I stayed here. But when I was mayor, I spoke before a senior citizen group, and in my words, I meant, I said to them, "I want you to know that you're welcome anytime to come to my office and talk about your problems or concerns, and remember that." And a man in the back of the room, I'll never forget this, said, "Mr. Mayor, I have never seen the inside of City Hall, and I will never see the inside of City Hall, because I'm in a wheelchair, and even if I could get into the front door, I could never make it to your office." And those words really hurt me, and I couldn't understand the reason for, I could understand the reason why he was saying it, but I'm trying to think of an answer to give him, and I couldn't. So, I got the same answer that most politicians do. "I understand your concerns, and I'll look into it." And he said to me, sad to say, "Mr. Mayor, that's the same excuse that every politician says. When you ask him a question, they can't answer." And I didn't, and I said to them, "Well, I'm not just every politician, and when I say I'm going to look into it, I'm going to look into it." And that bothered me when I slipped that night, and the next day, when I came to City Hall, I called for the DPW commissioner to meet my office, and I said to him, "I want you to start two ramps. I want a ramp on School Street to get into the basement, and I want a ramp at the concourse to get into the first floor." I also said to my law department and my staff, "I'm going to form a commission. It's going to be the Commission for Disabilities, and I want to get working on it, and I want to have the first meeting soon, because I want to pick members." And some of the members I have for that committee was John Champa, who lived in Ward 1, and I'm sure the Ward 1 alderman might have known him. He passed away a while back. Joe Maderas, Helen Cargan, the former alderman at large, Mike Gentilli, the former alderman from Ward 1. And there was many more that I can't remember. I'm getting too old. But in any case, they did great things, great things to help on the disabled. But it wasn't until July 26, 2000, when the George Bush, President George Bush, signed the order for the, for the American Disability Act. And that made major changes, because it allowed no one to discriminate against any disabled person in the workplace or elsewhere. And if not, if they were, and they were also protected by civil rights protection. So, once my committee got going, and I have to say that the committee did do a great job, the Civil Rights, the Commission for Civil Rights had so much to say and many changes that helped so many elderly people in the workplace, in the government, in the courts, and every place elsewhere they were always discriminated against. I can never understand a country this large, this strong, this rich, waiting so long for the year 2000 to help the disabled. We tried to help it 20 years earlier when I was mayor, and we thought we did a good job, but we needed the Americans Disability Act to put heat, teeth into it to protect those people. You have someone in this room that deserves a lot of credit, and that's Holly. She has done such a wonderful job helping with this act, and I know that she is a worker. I work with her in other areas. I work together with her. I'm vice president for the Somerville High School Scholarship Foundation, and we give out scholarships to so many people, and Holly's a part of that. And so, I know Holly as a friend and also as a leader. So, I'm just more thankful that you could all be a part of this, that I could be a part of it, because I'm so pleased and proud that we are finally doing something for those people with no reason for themselves, except for the fact that they were either disabled or they were born disabled. or they were born disabled. And that's not fair for those people. And I always had a heart, my heart went out to all of them, and it still does today. So I just want you to know that this is the reason why I'm here, to congratulate the committee for continuing to do such a wonderful job. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brune.
And thank you, Mr. President, through you. Now I'd like to invite up the Honorable Helen Corrigan, former alderwoman and former member, one of the first members, as Mayor Brune said, to his special commission on disabilities.
Ms. Helen Corrigan, great to see you. Thank you for being here.
Before I start my prepared speech, I want to say how much I appreciate this writing on the wall because one of my disabilities is I can't hear. I can hear conversations, but mostly I'm not hearing what's being said here. So this is terrific. Anyway, my name is Helen Corrigan, and as Jean Brune pointed out, I'm also a former... Oh, thank you. Is that better? I'm a former member of the Board of Aldermen. That was a long time ago. But I'm a former member of the Commission on Disabilities as well as a current member. And I echo what Jean said about Holly's leadership. It's been wonderful. But I also want to thank the commission, I'm sorry, the City Council, for presenting this resolution and making the month of July permanently Disability Pride Month. I also want to thank them for designating July 6 a permanent celebration of Americans with Disabilities Day. I remember the excitement in the early commission when the ADA was passed. The passage of this law was the culmination of years of advocacy by local, state, and national groups. It's worth noting that the person in charge leading this work was none other than getting it through Congress and the president was our own Massachusetts Senator Ted Kennedy. I would guess, looking around, that all members of the council are too young to remember what things were like before the Americans with Disabilities Act. Many buildings, public schools, churches, and businesses were inaccessible to people with mobility issues. Children with disabilities faced discrimination in schools. Jobs faced discrimination. Public transportation was mostly inaccessible. The building we're in now was not accessible until Jean Brune had the ramp built. Getting all these things done, everything that needed to be in compliance required a lot of money, retrofitting, and educating the public. It is still a work in progress. Thank you again for doing this.
Thank you, Helen.
Mr. President, I want to add from colleagues, but I just wanted to, before... I'm done speaking now, but except, I want to plug the Disability Pride Month flag-raising, which is going to happen on July 11, right out here on the concourse. Yeah, it's Thursday, July 11, prior to the City Council meeting, so if everyone can make it. What time is it? 5:00 PM. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Klingon. And I want to just acknowledge and honor that we have a lot of members of our commission here tonight. Thank you all for your service, and thank you for being here tonight. Counselor Strezko, and then Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. And I want to commend my colleague for putting this forward, and also to the commissioners, thank you for all your work. I see you. I will continue to work alongside you. And I'm sure some of you know, my experience is I cared for my grandmother for 12 years. She lived with me. She had a walker, and she was also completely deaf. And my experience caring for her was my day-to-day was constantly having to explain the world in which we navigate for her and that she navigates. So if she was hospitalized, it meant that I had to be present during every hospital shift change so that I can re-educate the doctors and the nurses and the staff. That she was hard of hearing. She read lips, kind of, but I was mostly her interpreter. And talk slowly and enunciate and make sure you're very clear. And sometimes I'd always, well, I would always put a sign up above her hospital bed, but I'd frequently come back to the hospital room to see it taken down. Hospital systems, to this day, still don't respond to that, which is, I can't comprehend. It meant in the wintertime and any other slippery time of the year, it meant having to constantly educate stores and restaurants as to why they need to salt their sidewalks. And we've had this discussion. Why are we still having this discussion? Asking store managers of Old Navy to please put down salt so my grandma can enter the building and buy a hat. Simple, simple things that were so complicated. Or just trying to get through the community. Or watching, taking my grandmother for ice cream in our car and watching two guys pull into the handicap spot, laugh as they go to JP Licks, get their ice cream, and laugh as they hopped in without an ADA accessible placard and drive off. But we couldn't park in that spot because they thought it was funny to get their ice cream and use the spot. And this was everyday life. And it left such an imprint that will never soften. And so these moments, these conversations have to constantly be happening in our community. So I'm so grateful this is happening. I'm glad we're sealing this in, and I'm looking forward to all the other changes we're going to make to do together because it has to happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. Wow, I even forgot I would raise my hand. I was just trying to... I was surprised Holly didn't want to speak, but you know, each to each their own. Through the chair, I'm really excited that we're having these conversations right now. It's, as many members of this horseshoe know, the issue of accessibility and accommodations is one that Somerville has a long history of struggling with. And has tried, I believe, and I hope, especially in recent years and through administrations like our former mayors, to really strive forward on. In a previous life, I interned at the Eco-Rite Center in Washington, DC, where we dealt with housing justice, but also accommodations. And one of the things that I worked on was literally looking through the regulatory requirements of the ADA, how bathrooms need to be built, how aisles in stores need to have a certain amount of space so that they are wheelchair-accessible. When people say that the ADA is one of the most important and powerful civil rights laws in this country's history, they are right. It impacts every aspect of life because that is what living with disabilities does. It impacts, in some cases, every aspect of your life. And I think it's really important that we're having this conversation on the same day that we talk about the importance of our parks and our playgrounds. The commissions, several counselors, have talked about and tried to push forward on the fact that more of our playgrounds must be accessible, have equipment that can be accessed by all members of our community. And so I hope that as we celebrate the hard, long-fought victories that the ADA represents, the members of the public who came out of their wheelchairs and crawled up the steps of Congress to fight for these laws, that we also make sure that we're striving to honor them through action. And so I know that the commissioners here are poised to do that and are very excited to partner with the council in that regard. And so I hope that we can do more than honor this day simply with a flag-raising, but also with policy, legislation, and continued investment. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I want to also thank Helen, and Jean, and Holly, and everyone on the Commission with Persons with Disabilities. Your work is invaluable. It's... I think we still have ways to go because in this country, when you're a senior and you're a person with disability, you're almost invisible. So Chris Dwan and myself, we co-founded Somerville Alliance for Safe Streets through your chair, and we actually took some folks, and we walked around with them. We could barely, like, just on the sidewalk, they couldn't cross. Like, if you're on a wheelchair, you're just going to get stuck because there's no ramp, there's no... It was a very sad day for us, and we actually mobilized and brought in a lot of delegation from the state and Congress and hopefully tried to move the needle. So I just want to say thank you for the work you do. And it's truly humbling to see, you know, our own heroes, you know, show up to kind of like, you know, speak to this issue that is still, you know, very relevant to this, you know, day and time. And I want to co-sponsor the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, thank you so much, Counselor Klingon, for leading on this. Counselor Klingon.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Holly, did you have something else? Would you allow, Mr. President, just a brief word from the questioner?
Of course. Welcome.
No clapping would be our request, if that's okay? If we could clap silently, like we do in other classrooms? This is my friend Carly. And this little girl... This is my friend Carly, and this little girl has been dying for a swing since last August. And I met her after her sweet mom tried every way to get a swing in a park, just one new swing. So when she turned four, which she has since, that birthday, right? Or four? Or four. So she could use a swing that would work for her. And I'm so excited that I get to meet all types of people, and I'm surrounded by so many amazing people. And our commission now has 12 of its 13 seats filled. I wish, no, quiet clapping, right? I wish Carly could be my 13th member. And it's so great that everyone who is part of this now has taught me so much. But I just would like you to know that the first point of Disability Pride Month for us, which we do have seven events, and I really hope people will come on Tuesday, July 9, at 7:00 PM at the TAB Building, it's a public meeting, was that we were going to raise a flag, but we were going to hang a swing in every park for Carly. And we're going to get that done regardless of how many more months we have to work together with the city and make sure that Carly has a place with her friends so they can all be on a swing together. That's all. So what do you say? No clapping?
No clapping.
No clapping. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here, Carly. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did put a council order in last meeting about the swing, I call it a swing program since these two, this group of five people have been pushing and working with the city to roll out a swing in many parks, all the parks. So hopefully we will have a resolution to that soon. But with that, I thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. This is really wonderful, and I look forward to seeing you all on the 11th and the rest of the events that you've helped organize. Thank you for your service. Next item, please.
The next item that the council will take out of order is item 10.5, a request of the mayor, requesting the appropriation of $103,190 from the fiscal year 2025 Salary Contingency salaries account to various fire alarm personal services accounts to fund the memorandum of agreement between the city and the Firefighters Association of Somerville Local 76 Fire Alarm Unit.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, council and council president and councilors, Matt Serigu, Labor Council for the City of Somerville. So in mid-June, we were able to reach a tentative agreement with the Fire Alarm Operators Union, Local 76. Since that time, we've been pushing to try and get this contract funded and ratified and funded for July 1 so that we could put everything in, the pay increases, and get everything in order for the new fiscal year. I'm happy to go over the high-level points of the agreement and then answer any questions the council may have. Starting with perhaps the most important part, compensation. The fire alarm operators have kind of a unique structure based on their last contract where there's a wage scale for more tenured fire alarm operators that were hired before June 30, 2020, and then a separate wage scale for those hired after July 1, 2020. We gave 3% COLAs to those hired before June 30, 2020 because their wage scale was still deemed competitive following the wage study. With the newer fire alarm operators, we found their wages were a little bit low, so we gave them market adjustments and really rewrote their entire wage scale. We also created 10- and 20-year steps for all fire alarm operators. Those are longer tenure, and those are newer ones, and provided bumps to certain stipends, longevity, EMD, fire service dispatch. We created a new data management stipend that will help the fire alarm operators modernize and update their internal systems to make sure everything's up to date and that suppression is able to respond quickly and efficiently to the correct addresses and with the correct contact information for certain addresses. We negotiated a schedule change that is our goal, will reduce overtime and improve the quality of life for fire alarm operators. And we transitioned the fire alarm operators to a vacation accrual system. So instead of getting all of their vacation at one time, they'll accrue on a monthly basis like non-union and some of our other union employees. And in exchange, we've provided an additional week of vacation, seven weeks, for those firefighters with 25 years of service or more. And the final, high-level, major component I would highlight is that we have added the paid family and medical leave benefit to this group of employees, which we are in the process of negotiating with several unions.
Thank you. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair, to the Labor Council. Were there any changes to the holiday schedule?
Council President, through you. Yes, thank you. We added Juneteenth to their holiday schedule, and we removed the employee's birthday was on their holiday schedule. Council President, through you. A number of our unions received their birthday as a paid holiday. So we exchanged Juneteenth for the employee's birthday.
All right. It is our custom to move for immediate approval of collective bargaining settlements. Congratulations. This is great news. Counselor McLaughlin.
What of Bunker Hill Day, sir?
Council President, through you. Bunker Hill Day will remain a holiday for the fire alarm operators.
Thank you.
Excellent. Seeing no further discussion, let's call the roll on this item now. We'll lay this on the table for approval.
Mr. President, I will move to discharge item number 24-0720 from Finance as it requires approval tonight, but had been kept in committee on Tuesday night due to no one being there to address it.
All right. That item?
On the motion to discharge item 24-0720 from the Committee on Finance and place it before the City Council this evening, Counselor McLaughlin.
This is to discharge?
Yes. Counselor Davis? Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
Counselor Said?
Yes.
Counselor Scott? Counselor Ba?
I'm not sure why we're discharging.
We're discharging an item so that we can... We're discharging an item so that we can discuss it.
Oh, okay, yes.
Sorry, Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld. Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that item is discharged from the Committee on Finance and is now before the council. Give me just one second, and I'll pull it up and read it for you. This is item 24-0720, a request of the mayor requesting approval to execute the Third Amendment to the lease agreement with Dana Family Series LLC for the Grove Street parking lot through June 30th, 2025.
I see Director Rinfret is here from Traffic and Parking. Do you wanna just introduce the item, or are there questions?
Good evening, thank you.
Please.
This is a simple, just extension of the lease for the Grove Street lot that is behind the McKinnons. That is something that we've rented for years. They have not increased the rent, and they just wanna, we wanna continue to manage it for them.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? Seeing none, that item is laid on the table for approval. Thank you for your being here.
That will return us to the regular order of business, and item 4.1.
Mr. President. Waive the reading of 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, and 10.1, and send those to Traffic and Parking.
Those items are referred to the Committee on Traffic and Parking.
The next item is item 4.6, in order by Counselor Klingon, that the Commissioner of Public Works install big-belly trash barrels at the intersection of Meacham and Moreland Streets.
Counselor?
Just send to Public Utility, Public Works.
That item is referred to Public Utilities.
Item 4.8 is a communication by Counselor Ewan Campin in his capacity as president, canceling this council's regular meetings scheduled for July 25th and August 8th, 2024.
That item is placed on file.
Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on June 25th, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met Tuesday, June 25th, with all five members present. We covered a 36-item agenda in an hour and 26 minutes. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight the following, an adjustment to the fees that the City Clerk's Office charges that establishes a dog tag replacement fee if the original dog tag is lost. There's currently no fee, so this new fee would recognize that there's a decent amount of labor by staff involved in manually creating a replacement tag. Also, a bonding request for around $1.3 million for a new fire pumper apparatus with a smaller, with a shorter length and a smaller wheelbase, similar to the Engine 3 pumper that we recently brought to the city. It'll replace an aging 2009 apparatus that will be shifted for reserve use. Counselor Scott highlighted the use of ARPA funds recently to purchase two other fire apparatuses. We also recommended unanimously that you approve an appropriation of $78,000 and a transfer the same amount to fund street sidewalk and pavement condition assessment and design services, an appropriation of just over $1 million, and two transfers totaling the same amount to fund continuing building design services, namely the Kennedy School chiller and proactive work on the West Somerville and Healy School HVAC systems. A transfer around $109,090 for 90 Washington Street litigation legal fees. Settling a legal claim of just over $7,000 required since the amount exceeds the $5,000 threshold and therefore requires council approval, and a transfer of the same amount. Payment of prior year invoices totaling $635 for translation, interpretation, and transcription services for RSJ. Paying Edley School natural gas prior year invoices totaling just over $3,800 found as part of the continuing DPW invoice cleanup. Two items for around a combined $4,300 in prior year invoices for the Police Department that came in during a period of staffing turnover in that department, and two prior year invoice items for just over $900 combined for paper shredding and job position advertising for HR. We also unanimously voted to recommend approval of the acceptance of the following grants tonight, a used generator gifted by Boston's Office of Emergency Management valued at around $18,000, prompting a deep dive into the city's emergency generator situation, which stands to get better with the acceptance of this generator. A roughly $4,500 grant from the state for the recycling dividend program to help pay for more totes and materials. A $3,000 Bar Foundation grant to send mobility staff to the 2025 NACTO Designing Cities Conference, both a recognition of their work and an important opportunity to showcase our mobility division. And a non-monetary state grant to assist us in creating a decarbonization roadmap. There were two grant acceptances, requests that were withdrawn at the request of the administration because those grants are gonna be handled at the state level, so rest assured the Blessing the Bay Boathouse Trail and that intersection work at Route 16 and Broadway still are happening, just being handled by others. And a third item was withdrawn by the administration that request of a transfer of funds to the Ginny Smithers Sanders Pool employee wages was placed on file. The biggest topic of discussion on Tuesday night was the 2024 addition of the Municipal Road Safety Grant. This has been the subject of a lot of interest from constituents after cyclist enforcement campaigns were carried out using this grant funding in 2023, resulting in a number of cyclists being cited for behavior that included the Idaho Stop. We heard from Sergeant McCary in the Police Department and legislative liaison Corigio that following a lot of that feedback from the community, a change was made last August to move away from that type of enforcement activity. Sergeant McCary went on to say that following this council's resolution last July, urging deprioritization of enforcement around the Idaho Stop, the Police Department is working on a formal deprioritization policy for the Idaho Stop. As a sponsor of that resolution, along with Counselor Ewan Campin, it was, it was great to hear that there's work on this since the Idaho Stop has shown to improve safety on our streets. I asked Sergeant McCary, point blank, if we should expect to get similar complaints this year about cyclists being cited for performing the Idaho Stop with the grant funds. The answer was a clear no. The remaining funds for 2024 are not focused on cyclist enforcement. I asked whether the Police Department was bound to the calendar of campaigns listed in the grant application, where the only remaining campaigns for 2024 are speed campaigns this month and next month, and the summer impaired driving and pedestrian safety campaign in August and September, all of which are targeted motor vehicle enforcement. And that was confirmed to be the case. In the end, the committee voted by a 3-2 margin to recommend approval of this request tonight. And finally, Director Bean spoke on Counselor Klingon's resolution requesting a report on handicap parking violation fees, fund spending. That promised report is item 10.6 on tonight's agenda, and with that, I ask this committee report be accepted as submitted.
Thank you, Counselor. On that committee report, Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. I just do wanna note that the same day we had that subcommittee meeting, there was a cyclist who was cited by SPD for the Idaho Stop. So this is a continuing problem, and, and I hope that residents continue to let counselors know if they are cited, because that will give us a sense of how much work has been put into practice around this policy order. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I wanna add my thanks to Chairman Wilson. This is obviously an issue that I care a lot about and did a lot of work with you last year on, and I was also very glad to see that this year, the grant is going to cover enforcement targeting by far the most dangerous stuff, which is motorists issues. And I was also surprised and glad to hear that there is work on a policy around enforcement for cyclists safely proceeding through red lights when there's no pedestrian conflicts. And with that, on the committee report, laid on the table for approval, and...
Sorry, we do have to take a roll call so that we can get to the items that require a roll call vote. I will also just make a note that Counselor McLaughlin is recused from the police grant items contained within this report. So on the Finance Committee report of June 25th, 2024, Counselor McLaughlin, Counselor Davis, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mba.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor and three absent, that committee report is approved. And that puts three items before the council for a roll call vote. Those are items 24-0859, the appropriation of $1,1,750.89 from the Facility Renovation Stabilization Fund, 24-0860, the appropriation of $78,148.40 from the Street Reconstruction Stabilization Fund, and 24-0876, a bond of $1,271,785 for fire pumper apparatus.
Can we take those together?
We can take those together.
Any issue with that? Okay, we'll take those together.
On those items, Counselor McLaughlin, Counselor Davis, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mba.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor and three absent, those items are approved.
Excellent.
The next item is item 6B, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on June 24th, 2024.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair, subbing in tonight as vice chair. The Committee for Legislative Matters met on June 24th with four counselors out of five present. We discussed a few items, and we have a number of them that we're gonna be supporting tonight, including, we talked about an unmanned, basically a drone that SPD was asking for for their junior police academy. They made clear that SPD does not currently have any drones. They do not have, as part of their department, any training to operate these drones, and are putting on an event where Boston PD will be operating drones to show children how they can be helpful in surveying areas, in law enforcement practices, checking on traffic crashes, et cetera, things of that nature. That was recommended for approval with three in favor, one against, and one absent. We also spoke about exterior cameras for the firehouses across the city. We did have an update to that submission, the, for the Surveillance Technology Impact Report, which is item 7.5 on the agenda. And we voted to recommend approval of a draft that we were discussing in committee, which was not technically before us. Again, that's 7.5. And, yeah, with that, I'd ask that this committee report be accepted as presented.
Excellent. The administration has also resubmitted a new Surveillance Technology Impact Report based on the conversation we had. So let's approve that committee report and then take up item 7.5, please.
Excellent, so we can lay that on the table for approval?
Yep.
And item 7.5 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for exterior cameras at fire stations.
So as amended, this was recommended for approval by the committee. Let's vote on it. Or lay it on the table for approval?
Yeah. And that brings us to item 6C, a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on June 26th, 2024.
Back-to-back. Counselor Burnley.
Back-to-back, okay. Thank you, through the chair. We met for 10 minutes, probably still not the fastest committee meeting, but quite fast, to speak about one item, a flammable, new flammable license in Boynton Yards for over 3,000 gallons of flammable. This was for a lab building that currently does not have tenants. They were just being proactive, giving themselves space to move once they do get these tenants that will need this, these flammable. But had a quick discussion with them, know that they are taking safety protocols seriously, and we recommended approval unanimously. So with that, I'd like for this committee report to be accepted as presented.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 6D is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on June 24th, 2024.
Counselor Said.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Traffic and Parking Committee met on June 24th with three members present. We worked through six items for one hour. All items were marked as completed. Regarding the policy around restricted parking signs during construction and how to limit negative impact in the community, Director Rinfret explained that contractors, contractors may use the signs to provide access or for deliveries, but they may not be used for convenience. Contractors are responsible for taking them down. She added that there should be no overriding of signs, and if that is observed, the parking department should be informed. Item number two, in regards to placing slow children and not a through-street signs on Alston Street by the corner of Cross Street, Director Rinfret pointed out that Alston Street is a throw street, so having a not, so a not-a-through-street sign would be inaccurate. Director Rosson added that staff will interact with Counselor McLaughlin to discuss options and solutions around traffic calming measures. Regarding daylight in the corner of Maple Avenue and School Street, Director Rosson is on the parking, said that it's on the parking department's complaint list, and violations are occurring mostly on Sundays. So parking control officers have been working on Sundays to enforce the regulation. Regarding the order requesting to begin a public process to determine how to manage traffic issues on Benton Road, Director Rosson commented that mobility staff will be scheduling pop-up events in neighborhoods as well as community meetings. We had an item regarding Green Cab Company requesting increase in the taxi cab meter rate to $3.80 for the first quarter mile, and additional 50 cents for each additional quarter of a mile, and $32 per hour waiting time. Representative from Green Cab Company thought the committee that the last increase was in 2012, and that the rates in Boston and Cambridge have gone up since. The cost of parts and fuel has gone up, and the size of the fleet decreased because of Uber and Lyft. The company doesn't want to lose drivers to Cambridge. The representative assured the committee that a rate increase would not affect its contract with the city. The company also wants to increase its senior discount from 20% to 25%. And the representative was informed that for senior discount, it would be a company decision, has nothing to do with the city. And the next item was about assessing the timing of the traffic light at Main Street and Broadway. The Director of Engineering said that the city has been working with the MBTA over the past year to upgrade traffic signals, and this particular light is one of them. New signal equipment will be installed, which will allow, allow for better timing modification and monitoring. Presently, traffic, bus, and pedestrian travel is being monitored to gather info, and as of today, there are no plans to change anything until that assessment is done. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a deed and maintenance agreement for Leonard Grimes Park at 31 Tough Street.
At the request of the administration, this is laid on the table. We'll get an update soon.
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $40,662.50 from the Street Tree Stabilization Fund for the tree inventory update project.
Counselor Wilson, you just wanna speak on these three items briefly? Procedurally, why we're taking them up tonight?
Procedurally, yeah. Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, basically, Finance Committee's done a fair amount of meeting lately, as you all know. There were a handful of items that could have been sent to committee. We could have had one of the shorter meetings of all time on July 9th. Instead, it made sense to take them up tonight, and we can have the night off.
Excellent. So we're gonna take these up for immediate consideration. We have staff here to speak to each of them. Counselor Mba, do you have a question?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. You wanna present on this, or?
Please, yeah, if you wanna just introduce the item.
Yes, I'm happy to give a brief overview of the items. I will be speaking to all of them since staff are not here tonight to speak to these items, but I have been given information that I can relay on their behalf. Do you have a specific question, Counselor?
I can go, yeah. I mean, first, when was the last tree inventory done?
Great, through the president. The last tree inventory was completed in 2018. The staff have been working on updating that inventory and are requesting these funds to complete the contract. The work, the amount of the work has exceeded the amount that was appropriated in fiscal year 24, and this is the amount needed to complete that contract for the... year '24, and this is the amount needed to complete that contract for the rest of the work, to complete the inventory.
Okay, thank you. And through your chair, how do they do the count?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please, counselor?
How do they do the count for the inventory?
Through the president. I am not sure on the technical processes for doing the count in terms of the trees. I know that our city staff are working with a contractor who is doing the work of the inventory.
I mean, and I was just curious if they hire high school students or volunteers or, like, you know, it's a request before us, we want to understand the mechanics of, you know, the process.
Through the president. No, there's a contract with the organization, a professional organization that is doing the work of helping with the tree inventory.
Thank you, Mr. President.
On that item, I move for approval.
So on that item, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Neuville.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is approved.
Next item, please.
The next item is Item 7.3, a request of the mayor requesting approval to accept and expend an $8,500 grant with no new match required from the Department of Fire Services to the Fire Department for the Student Awareness of Fire Education Program.
All right, on this item.
Yes, thank you, through the president, to the council members. This is a grant that the city has received for numerous years. It is the allotment for this upcoming year. This grant allows the Fire Department to provide an educational program to students around fire safety and life safety, such as how to prevent fires, how to respond in a fire, and provide some additional educational materials.
Questions? I move for approval. That one, we don't need a roll call at the moment.
Item 7.4 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to accept and expend a $2,900 grant with no new match required from the Department of Fire Services to the Fire Department for the Senior Student Awareness of Fire Education Program.
Please.
Yes, through the president, this grant is very similar, but it is focused on education for senior citizens. This allows the Fire Department to do, provide home inspections and fire safety for senior citizens, so that helps them with identifying fire hazards in their home and addressing those. It also helps the Fire Department provide smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms.
Who wants to vote against that? I move for approval. We'll lay that on the table for approval.
That brings us to Item 8.1, an officer's communication from the city clerk submitting an amendment to Section 13-6.1 of the Code of Ordinances to increase taxi cab meter rates.
All right, so this was pursuant to a recommendation that came out of Traffic and Parking Committee. This is the follow-up actual ordinance language. Are there questions on this, colleagues? Counselor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I just want to understand, like, a couple of things about this. First is, like, how do these fare compare with Uber and Lyft?
Clerk, can you speak to that?
I can't. I can't speak to ride, I have no deal with ride charges.
Okay, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, I can actually speak to this because this came up years ago. The issue is Uber and Lyft are not held accountable to us at all, and green and yellow cab are. So they actually have to come here and ask us for these rates, whereas Uber and Lyft can do whatever they want. So I believe that's what we're doing here, is we have to approve their rates because they're regulated by the government, whereas Uber and Lyft are not.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to President McGlaugh, I mean, Councilor McGlaughlin, I was calling you Mr. President, that's, that's like, you know. So I guess, one thing that we, the city's senior transportation program pays for the cab rides to doctors and, you know, grocery store for, for the seniors through these cabs. Is that correct? Is that my understanding? Because we have this program. Can somebody clarify that?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So does that mean that, okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
All right. Counselor Said, I can't tell if you have your hand up. Are you looking to speak on this?
I do not, but I do want to add that the representative from Green Cab did mention that they would like to increase their senior discount from 25% to 20%. And we have informed them that this is like a business decision, but as far as they know, that's something they want to pursue. So just put the information out there.
Thank you. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I just literally want to repeat what Counselor Said said, since people in the chambers might not have been able to hear. The discount for seniors is actually increasing from these companies, so hopefully any changes in rates will not negatively impact the most vulnerable towards the program you're speaking of. Thank you.
All right, thank you on this item. I believe we need to approve and roll and ordain.
Exactly right, Mr. President. On this item, we'll take three roll call votes, starting with the vote to approve the amendment to Section 13-6.1 of the Code of Ordinances to increase taxi cab meter rates. On that item, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Neuville.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is approved. And on enrollment, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Neuville.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is enrolled. And finally, on ordainment, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Neuville.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is ordained.
Excellent.
And that brings us to Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. I would like to waive the readings of Items 9.1 through 9.13 and ask that they be approved after a brief message from our sponsors. Some of these great events that are going to be put on in our community in the next month or so, I think deserve a shout-out. We have, in fact, the Somerville Museum applying for a public event license for docent openings for various dates between June 22nd all the way to October 31st. So check, go, check that out at Somerville Museum. We have our mamas, Mutual Aid Medford in Somerville, applying for a public event license in East Somerville for a neighborhood party on June 30th from noon to 6:00 PM. So if you love your mamas, go to East Somerville on June 30th. Of course, we have the Disability Pride Flag Commemoration on July 11th from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM right here at City Hall, so please check that out. We also have the Queer Theater Project, one of my favorites, doing Shakespeare in the Park on August 24th, 25th, and 25th, from noon to 8:00 PM. So if you like Shakespeare, but you think it's not gay enough, go to the park and check that out. And lastly, we have Nice, a vendor market, which happens annually. We are proving, we're hoping to approve tonight, dates on July 26th, 27th, and 28th, from 10:00 AM all the way to 11:00 PM. So if you love nice things, check out Nice and support your local vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Those items are approved.
Item 9.14 is-
Let's waive the readings of 9.14 to 9.17 and place those items on file.
Item 10.2 is an order by Council Klingon that the ADA Coordinator provide this council with an update on the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan Task Force.
Counselor Klingon.
Mr. President, sent to gender equities and vulnerable populations.
Excellent, that item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 10.3 is an order by Council Panetta Neuville that the Director of Economic Development discuss with this council ways to provide small businesses with financial and technical support when impacted by construction and other emergencies.
Counselor Panetta Neuville.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has come up sort of sinkhole for those who've not been on the west side of the city in the last week, on Holland, on a pretty major commercial stretch of Holland between Davis and Teal. And I've heard from lots of business owners, both in Word 6 and 7, about, obviously, the impact of fewer opportunities for drive-through traffic. Even pedestrians aren't really sure if they're allowed to go, you know, beyond the barriers that are there in Davis Square. So I reached out to the Director of Economic Development to ask if there are any opportunities to support our small businesses in any way during this emergency construction. And there isn't really an established program at this moment. They're still spending down the ARPA dollars that had gone to small businesses through multiple support rounds, but she's eager to have the conversation. So I'd love to include the council in that discussion, perhaps when we're back from recess. So if we could send this to a committee, perhaps Housing and Community Development, to have that discussion.
Certainly, that item is referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Item 10.4 is a resolution by Council Wilson that the administration work with the vendor to review the certification and recertification processes for affordable housing units and identify ways to streamline the process and make it less onerous for residents.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, I brought this item after hearing from constituents and city staff who talked about just how onerous the current process is. The threshold is just shockingly low for what a resident of an affordable unit is required to basically jump through procedural hoops to explain. The example was given, like, Venmo payments from friends for dinner that show up in a bank statement. They have to get those explained and basically get those certified that that's what that is. I was told the vendors following sort of the general guidelines they use, and in conversation with city staff, it came up whether we might be able to get them to change those guidelines and go with a higher threshold for their work here in Somerville. You know, it just seems like a really easy, concrete way we could, you know, we could show that affordable housing is a priority here in the city by making it less taxing on residents to certify and recertify. You know, I talked to Counsel Strezzo before the meeting, and it sounds like Housing and Community Development might be a good place for this to go. Love to hear a discussion there about it. Thanks.
Counselors Panetta Neuville, Klingon, and Burnley would like to sign on. Do you want to speak on it as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Wilson, thank you for bringing this to us. One of the, in the discussion, if I'm not there, one of the items I hope is discussed is, right now, the city is fronting the cost for translation for these documents. And it should be, not us. And so I hope language justice and language access is a part of the discussion, because it's a beast of a project, of course, to review the recertification process, but I just wanted to name that as an issue as well.
Counselor, sorry if I missed. Did you have a preference on the committee?
Mr. President, Housing and Community Development would be a good spot for it, I think.
Thank you. That item is referred to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Item 10.6 is an officer's communication from the Finance Director responding to Item 24-0910, a resolution requesting an up-to-date report on the financial activity of the Handicapped Parking Violation Fees Fund.
That item is placed on files, and I'd like to waive the readings of 10.7 to 10.10 and place those items on file as well.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda for the evening, Mr. President.
I believe we have at least one late item. Do we do our votes first or after?
We can take the late item first.
Okay. Late items, please.
There is one late item before the council, and that is an order by Council Klingon that the Somerville Police Department increase patrols in and around the Mystic View residences for July and August.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the clerk for accepting this. It's in light of recent events, there's been a couple of shooting incidents in the last few days, one of which may not have, may or may not have involved individuals living in the Mystic View, although it seems that that may be the case. And my concern is that with these shooting incidents, there was a possible retaliation in Cambridge. My concern is that we're going into a, you know, things have been quiet for quite some time, but my concern is that we really need to make sure that we're securing these areas where there could be potential flare-ups throughout the summer months. So I just want, as I'm not going to be at the next meeting, I wanted to get this in in hopes that SPD will be able to accommodate and try to calm the situation, at the very least with mayor presence, so hopefully we don't have any instances of shootings. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no discussion, that item is laid on the table for approval.
And there are no further items before the council.
Excellent.
So we'll take a bunch of them off the table, and this will be on approval of Items 1.3, 2.1, 3.1, 4.1 to 4.7, 6B through 6D, 7.3 through 7.5, 9.1 through 9.13, 10.1 through 10.5, Item 24-0720, and one late item. And to place on file, Items 4.8, 9.14 through 9.17, and 10.6 through 10.10. On those items, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon.
Yes.
Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, I want to move for reconsideration of all financial items in hopes this fails.
On reconsideration in the hopes that it fails for all financial items, colleagues vote no if you do not want to change any of your votes.
On the motion, Council McGlaughlin.
No.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
No.
Council Said.
No.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
No.
Council Burnley.
Nay.
Council Klingon.
No.
Council Strezzo.
Nope.
Council Panetta Neuville.
No.
Council Ewan Campen.
No.
With no councilors in favor, nine opposed, and two absent, reconsideration has failed, and those items stand as indicated.
Counselor Mbah moves for adjournment.
On adjournment, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis. Council Wilson.
Yes, please.
Council Said.
Yes.[1753.25]